Welcome and good evening to the planning board meeting for Tuesday, May 3rd. These are being televised and recorded. Take a motion on the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Babe, seconded by Lena. Any discussion, hearing none. All in favor, opposed, unanimous. We have an 81P for 160 East Main Street, Milford East Main LLC. Check was received in the amount of $250.
Good evening, John Nenner with Gary and Hellman. I have an A&R plan. This is the old Imperial Chevrolet dealership. This is now the Jim, next door, World Jim. This was the old, I think it was, this is the old garage here that they knocked down at one time.
The old, yeah. Scott Hearn's garage.
Yeah, Scott Hearn's garage. So this piece is an L-shaped piece. We want to cut off this little section here, include it with the World Jim parcel. It meets all zoning regulations. The front section's commercial, back section is residential.
Endorseable as submitted.
Any questions from the board, hearing none. Motion by Joe, seconded by John. All in favor, opposed, unanimous.
How many want a copy of the sign?
Yeah.
He gets one of those. Oops. Was it? Was he on?
We have an Asbilt plant supplemental for 20 Beaver Street.
I'll bring it back tomorrow.
Larry?
They're not here yet.
We will skip over three. We have number four, reconsideration of ZBA special permit referral, 97 Cedar Street. That will be you, sir. For the record, could you just identify your name and address, please?
My name is Bob Motuzas. I work for U-Haul of Western Mass in Vermont. And I live here in Milford.
Eighteen Christina, could you spell your last name, please?
M-O-T-U-Z-A-S.
Thank you.
Sure.
Feel free.
Where's your plan? Full-size plan? Your engineer was supposed to bring the full-size plan to the meeting?
Understood that he had given it to you.
There's no plan?
I don't have a full-size, a full-size plan. All that we have is what's in the packet that was submitted in reduced form. My understanding that he was to bring the plan.
My understanding is he left it with you.
There's no plan?
No.
Can't be a decision.
This new plan here, Larry? This one?
Yep. Yeah, there is, it's in the packet, but the full-size plan isn't. He didn't bring it.
The plan is readable?
Yeah.
Okay. So the applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for the addition of U-Haul rental business on the subject property. The existing use for the property consists of a gasoline station, an auto repair garage, and a propane canister exchange center. The proposal is to add truck, van, and trailer rentals to the site. The items submitted with the application consist of U-Haul marketing materials, not a description of how the operation will actually function on the site. Also, the sketch supplemental does not meet the ZBA requirements for current plan of the property or lot, prepared and signed by a certified civil engineer or registered land surveyor. And if applicable, dimensional areas for vehicle parking, for open space, and for recreation must also be shown. Without a complete application, especially including the up-to-date site plan, it is impossible to determine if adequate off-street parking for the existing use are being provided on the site. And this does not address the addition of yet another business that itself would generate traffic and the need for additional parking while at the same time eliminating available parking spaces by displaying rental units. This is a highly congested site at a highly congested intersection. The 2013 Friday AM peak hour traffic count was 2,450 total trips at the Cedar Street-Diller Street-Fortune Boulevard intersection. The addition of yet another traffic generating vehicle-related use to this site is ill-advised. Therefore, it is Larry's recommendation that an unfavorable be forwarded to the ZBA. I don't know if he's looking for a plan or not, but the members have said that they can somewhat follow along with the submitted plan, so by all means, if you can sort of fill in the blanks and...
So we're having a reconsideration because we didn't have a certified site plan in time for the last meeting, so...
We don't have it now.
You still don't have one, but we'll just... They're not stamped, but that's neither hand, just...
But, okay, so, with that being said, it looks like we have a site plan together that indicates where we would put trucks on that, on that site. However, what I wanted to clear up with regards to any misconception of who we are and what we do, we're a U-Haul center. We're not going to be a U-Haul center. It's a dealer service that's in part with his primary business, just a part of, in addition to his primary business. But it can be a U-Haul dealer and expecting on a stay in this, it's just not really a U-Haul. So with regards to the traffic consideration that you have there, we estimate that this dealer would do, based on what we're asking for for the amount of parking spaces, 40 transactions a month. And at 40 transactions a month, the impact on the traffic, at 1.25 cars per day, and what days do we want to stay open? And we can control what days we have, we can control hours, we can control how many trucks be dropped off at that location, and we have supporting dealers in surrounding towns that...
Bob, can I just stop you for one quick second?
Sure.
Unless I'm missing something, I don't see where this plan is showing where you're planning on placing these U-Haul items, whether they be trucks, vans, trailers, or what have you. They're not marked. What I'm showing is parking spaces, and I'm very, it's very challenging for us to try to figure out in correlation to the garage needs, the mechanic needs, the propane needs, and then in correlation to where and how many vehicles or trailers or trucks that you're trying to place, that...
Yeah, they're marked at the back of the pocket space.
I can't see that, Babe.
E, B, C.
Was that what that means?
Yeah. If you look at the two pages below that, they got the smaller areas hand-drawn with the four trucks.
Yeah, forgive me, I just can't.
I don't follow, ladies.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Go ahead. So you're only looking to store about, it looks at this, four vehicles?
Well, if those parking spaces looks like what we can do, then that's what it could be. We could certainly work with four vehicles there. It's like I was saying, other towns like Upton, Mendon, Gellingham, could support that dealer. And that dealer can make reservations for as many vehicles as he wants and send them to other locations, and maybe split commissions. The dealer is commission-only, make a certain percentage of every rental transaction that you do, every reservation that you make. So, like I say, if he doesn't have the equipment, or if his demand is higher than he is allowed, we'll control the amount of equipment that gets dropped off at that location, and the surrounding towns can support him, the amount of equipment he needs, and the amount of reservations that he can make. So try to adjust the traffic, I certainly understand that.
I know, I know, I saw that.
But we do have ways of combating that.
That lot is always bad.
I have 30 dealers on my route, and, you know, every one, you know, town would say how many spaces they can put on their lot, and, you know, we can control that based on one-way trucks coming in and which location to have them dropped off at. If numbers get too high at his location, you can certainly move them.
It's the first sheet. He's seeking a reversal in your unfavorable decision from last meeting, or from the 20...
Yeah, I already read that when you were in your office, so...
Just see them.
No, no. Anything else to add, Bob? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, with that being said, I don't, I don't see it being a huge impact on the, on the traffic flow down there, based on what we're doing, but I certainly understand what you're saying, and, like I said, we can have control over that.
Do you, do you happen to know what the gas station's needs are as far as how many mechanics? In other words, how many parking spots do they need to delegate for mechanics? How many parking spots do they need to delegate for auto repairs? How many parking spots do they need to delegate for propane?
That's over here.
See, I can't read this god-blessed thing. I'm having a difficult time.
One space for 400 square feet of gross floor area.
Can I borrow your glasses? Because evidently I need them.
Two spaces per service, two spaces per service bay.
That's why they were supposed to have a full-size plan.
One space for 5,000 square feet of display area. So effectively, 13 spaces.
Is all that's required?
Is all that's required, plus the, plus the four spaces that they...
Jeez, thanks, John.
You know, obviously, the four spaces that they're asking for to be used for storage of vehicles.
So that would total 17, and they say they have 24.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
What's the size of these U-Hauls?
So they range anywhere from a cargo van size, a nine-foot cargo van size, up to 26 feet. We're not looking to put a 26-foot truck down there, we're not looking to put a 20-foot truck down there. I think the biggest trucks that we want are 10-foot trucks and 15-foot trucks. Those are the most common ones that people use for local moves. Anything bigger than that, we can put at other locations outside of the town. But...
So the size that you would put there is 20 feet?
10 to 15.
10 and 15.
10 and 15.
Yeah, 10 and 15.
We'd have to almost say that because the parking spaces that are designated wouldn't work for a 20-foot.
Right. That place is always full of cars.
Well, could they, so I would just afford pocket spaces?
Four pocket spaces would be adequate for him to do 40 transactions a month. Two of them were vans, you know, and one 10-foot and one 15-foot truck, that would be adequate.
Larry, have you gone down to see if, I mean, it's nice on the plan, I'm just wondering are, or I guess we could request it, but I don't know that any of these spaces are marked.
No, not all of them are. That's, if this, if this were to be approved, they would have to, they would have to bring the plan back for approval and then stripe it according to the plan, or if it's amended according to that.
Okay. Yeah, because I, my recollection of the site was that along that edge, it's pretty much a free-for-all.
Right.
Yeah, Brad couldn't make it tonight here, but he said he would do whatever he would need to do to clean up his property, so to speak, to a big room to put the trucks. Any other questions?
I would think that would include removing all the other vehicles that are, the older vehicles that are stored out in the trees off of the edge of the pavement as well.
He's aware of that, and if that's, if that's a stipulation, he could certainly do that.
Yeah, well, they shouldn't be there now.
Okay, all right.
To me, this sounds like it's more about a marketing opportunity than this actually, and don't misunderstand what I'm about to say, but more marketing and visibility than it is about storage of vehicles. It's, you're hoping that someone drives by and notices that they rent U-Hauls more than you're looking to actually store them. So you need something for visibility purposes, is what it seems to me.
Yeah, we just expect to...
But the problem is, is that regrettably specific to this site, is that you do have vehicles off that, that are off, that aren't shown, that don't belong there, and so on and so forth. So this becomes a little more challenging, but... Any other questions from the board? Pleasure of the board.
Motion, we sent a favorable recommendation to the ZBA limiting the amount of U-Haul vehicles at four at any one time on the site.
Motion made by Joe for favorable limited to four, not to exceed overall length. You want to do that?
Yeah, an overall length.
10, 15 foot.
15, no, we have 15 foot.
Are the parking spots, I know he'd have to come back, but are the parking spots, and that, with the opening, is 15 feet going to encroach upon the...
Should be okay, they were 20, they should be 20 feet or 19 feet in length, so they should be all right. So we can't, not to exceed 15 feet.
Four, favorable with four, not to exceed 15. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Babe. Any further...
Yeah. I'd like to see a full plan, too.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. He has, you're going to come back with a, with a site, a full site plan.
He's got to come back.
Yeah, he's got to come back with a full, full stamp plan.
It's a miscommunication between...
Continue, continue.
Sorry about that.
This is just a...
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just so they recognize the site's not going to look like the Upton site.
Well, four, I can put 20 trucks on the Upton site, you can't, obviously, you can't...
No, I'm saying, with signs and piles of tires with signs.
Any further discussion, hearing none? All in favor, opposed, unanimous of four, of five, rather.
Thank you.
Number five, ZBA special permit, 191 Medway Street.
Number three here yet?
Number three?
20 Beaver Street?
20 Beaver?
No, it's not here.
Nope, okay.
What happened?
20 Beaver, who's 20? Is anyone here for 20 Beaver?
For five.
Nope, okay. We're at number five, ZBA special permit referral for 191 Medway Street. Anyone here for 191? Come on up, sir. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for an auto-related use on the subject premises. Specifically, the proposal is to change from its prior use as a glass company to a new use, excuse me, a new use as an auto repair garage. All auto-related uses require special permit approval from the ZBA. There are no changes being proposed at this site. The existing parking lot will remain unchanged except for the restriping of the parking spaces. There will be no additions to the existing building. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, although a site plan will be required from the planning board subsequent to the grant of the special permit by the ZBA. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable.
The induction that's in your packet is of this plan, which is essentially an existing condition plan that shows the ability for the applicant to meet all the off-street parking requirements. They're going to be restriping the lot once they get their special permit.
Could you identify yourself for the record and...
Michael Scanzola.
Your address?
34 West Thomas Street, Milford, Massachusetts.
It's all yours.
What am I, what do you want to know?
What you going to do?
It's already in the report.
Auto repair.
Okay.
Nice to...
Pleasure of the board.
Well, I think he has an auto repair shop down by...
Yeah, I have, we already have an auto repair shop at Easy Way Cowwash. We're relocating to this new building, so...
Sir, I don't know what you're trying, I'm not trying to be smart. I don't know what you're trying to do, that's why...
Well, you know, I'm paying people to, I don't know, like, they told me I would just come here and they would ask me if I was going to strip the parking lot, and so we're going to do that. If you want to know more, ask me. I, you know, I'm delighted to answer, look at what questions you have.
Okay. Glad Lena filled for you.
All right, so you're moving, did you, you purchased this, this...
We're in the process.
Last place, you're in, you're in process of purchasing it. You're moving from one place of business to another place, correct?
Yes.
And with the same, so how many bays do you have?
Same amount of bays, three bays.
Okay.
And 500 square foot facility, and we've got to do auto repair.
Say again?
Auto repair.
Auto repair. Now, is there anything else you're going to do there? Are you going to lease any cars, or, I think you have a...
We have a used car license right now that I'd rather not give up, but, you know, we have it at 193 East Main Street, but, you know, if it's going to block things down at this point, maybe, you know, once again, I'm not, I'm not happy about it, but, you know, maybe we give up the used car license for now, and maybe revisit that later. So, I mean, right now...
So how many, how many cars do you have?
I believe, I take the licenses for five or six cars.
Five or six cars?
That's not going to be applicable to this site. He's not applying for a Class II on this site. He needs a special permit to have auto-related uses on this site, and that's all this application is for.
Well...
So I'm recommending a favorable report to the ZBA. The site is capable certainly of handling this business, and they'll have more than enough parking, but he will need to come back with the site plan and stripe the lot.
He'd have to come back again if he wants to put used cars. It's not, that's not what's in the application right now.
Right, that's not what the application's about, okay. I was just curious about that.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Pleasure of the board.
I'll move to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA.
Moved by Lena for favorable to the ZBA, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion, hearing none? All in favor, opposed, unanimous?
All set.
All set, sir.
Is that yours?
Well, you got to go to the ZBA, but yes, you're free to leave here. ZBA special permit referral, 28 Congress Street. 28 Congress Street. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for a change from one non-conforming use to another use on the subject premises. Specifically, the proposal is to change the prior use of an, oh boy, accessory building to the rear of the property from a non-conforming commercial dance studio to a new use as a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. It appears that there are no other changes being proposed to the site. The primary use of the property is an existing three-family dwelling. The addition of another dwelling unit will generate less traffic than the dance studio had in the past. However, an effort should still be made to provide two off-street parking spots for each dwelling unit. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable be forwarded to the ZBA.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Oh, hi, Mr. Heller.
Just for the record, Warren, if you don't mind.
My name is Warren Heller. I'm an attorney with an office in Milford.
Okay, one, two, four.
I represent June Glenn, who I'm sure everybody on the board is aware that the location in question was for over 50 years, the location of the Milford School of Dancing, and for at least 50 of those years, Ms. June and Ms. Donnet were the instructors in that school. The property right now is being used as a dance studio, but there have been problems with the congestion caused by the parking. I think we're all aware of it. My office is right on the corner, and I can tell you in years past that I would see several parents and children crossing down to Exchange Street where they park their cars, all along Congress Street and other areas. What June Glennon, who is now the sole owner of the property, would like to do would be to convert what was this dance studio in the rear of the property into a residential building, a single-family home. The property right now, and I have a few photos I'd certainly need for you to take a look at, Mr. Chairman. If you were looking at the property from Congress Street, you see the primary building is actually a two-family house. There's a first floor with tenants and a second floor with tenants. Now, what a lot of people may not realize is that perpendicular to that building in the rear is a two-room small apartment that some of you may recall Marty Semino lived at for many years. And that would be this building right here along the side, so it would, it's sort of like an L shape, but the main house and that unit are not connected. So the unit along the side has its own separate entrance. Now, the actual dance studio is shown in this photograph, and the entrance right now is through that red door, and you'll see it's a two-story building, but the upstairs is an attic that is not going to be used to the residential use at all. And one final photograph, just to put the property in perspective, this particular photograph shows the rear of the studio, the second entrance, and how it's juxtaposed to the, to the, what I would refer to as the Semino apartment. Okay? So you've got three units there now. We're asking for a change of, a change of use to going from business to residential, which interestingly is a reverse of what happened in 1957. But to put this again in historical perspective, 1957 Attorney William Murray represented June Glennon's parents, Pasquale and Mary Cosmetino, who filed an application with the zoning Board of Appeals, and we have that application, in which they were seeking to convert the residential use of a barn into a dance studio. We're asking that we revert back and turn the dance studio back to a residential property. The zoning Board of Appeals, on September 23rd, 1957, voted unanimously, they said therefore, the zoning Board of Appeal unanimously voted to grant the variance that they, they at that time under the bylaw had to get a variance, to change the residential use of the above-mentioned barn for business, namely a dance studio. Chairman was John L. Muscilli, members were William L. Whalen and George O. Stewart was the secretary.
He was too young then.
So that's pretty much it. I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
I know the buildings, I know exactly what you're talking about. My daughter used to take dancing lessons there many years ago, so I know what she's doing, so I don't really have a problem with this.
Do we care about frontage or anything like that?
No. Change from one non-conforming use to another.
Well, I may make a motion, we give a favorable recommendation.
Motion made by Babe for favorable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lena. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just have one issue. We need to make sure that we have parking spaces available. We need to have paved parking, not gravel driveway.
If you look at the...
They are paved, I think.
On the left-hand side, did I get the...
Yeah, it's a gravel driveway, though.
It's gravel.
Down the end.
Asking for paved parking.
Okay, that's fine. And there are two spaces over on the right-hand side.
The parking stinks, to be totally honest. The way this sets up is that it's three-deep, so you've got, you effectively have no way of having people, if they have two cars, there's no way of controlling, you've got somebody that's going to get stuck behind somebody else, but I guess we'd live with it. I don't know how we'd get away from it, I don't really like it.
We really want the make paving.
Yeah, I think you need to, Babe, especially if they're going to be using it, if they're going to be using it now all the time.
I understand, but we're going to be pushing with this stormwater management for impervious thing, and...
Well, not for parking lots.
No, they're going to, if they go into the enterprise fund, they're going to charge you for pervious material. It's going to be a charge.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to...
Feel free, Warren, please.
You know, there have been three residential units there going back to 1957. They have been parking cars there without, without any major problems, because the people who would come to the dance studio knew they could not park, those were residential spaces. The tenants got along. Usually, there's only one person who lives on the rear in that two-bedroom apartment. Sometimes they have cars, sometimes they don't. So I don't, I, just to comment on Mr. Caligione's, what he commented on, I don't, I don't see there's going to be a major problem. There hasn't been for 50 years, people living there, parking there. I know that they put in the gravel, they, you know, they had no problem with that either, they just added the two spaces over on the far right. Obviously, you know, we would do whatever the board feels appropriate, but I think the existing parking spaces in their existing condition are satisfactory.
Mr. Chairman? If I recall, when she put the dance studio there, she had to comply to parking spaces, and she had to redo that whole area. So, you know, I feel as if that's, that's fine, that she already had to do that anyway.
Right.
So there's enough parking spaces for three?
There's room, and they're actually.
Enough spaces for six on the left-hand side and two on the left.
On the left-hand side, there were spaces marked for three.
I don't think that's, I don't know that that's. Three-deep, two-wide.
Okay.
Which is what I, which is what I.
Yeah, and they would be, they are two-wide. They'd be two-deep, and they'd still be going to the street. And then there are two on the far right, to the right of the front door.
Okay.
They're newly created.
Right. I know that, yeah. Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, those.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Do we have a motion in the second, if I'm understanding this correctly, for favorable? Provided that the parking spots be asphalted. Correct? Yes?
Sounds good.
That's the motion.
Two per unit?
Yeah, the eight shown.
You gotta have two per.
Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you.
Do you want these pictures?
I'll leave those for the zoning board.
Okay.
Thank you all.
ZBA special permit referral, 39 Green Street. 39 Green Street. The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for the addition of retail sales on the subject premises. This, in effect, would constitute a modification of the existing 1114, 2013 special permit that allows for commercial car wash, auto servicing, detailing and auto changes used on the property. Specifically, the proposed retail operation is to be for the sales and service of yard car and landscaping tools and equipment.
Care. Yard care.
Oh, I'm sorry, yard care. Landscaping tools and equipment. It appears that there are no other changes being proposed to the site. The cumulative off-street parking requirement can be met. All other zoning requirements appear to be satisfied. There will be no vehicle sales on the premises at any time. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA, subject to there being no outdoor storage or display of items associated with the retail sales and service operation. Mr. Pettenari?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ernie Pettenari. My law office here in Milford is at 12 Main Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the landlord, who's Mark Grzoli, and his tenant, who's Barry DeRusso. And at the risk of just exposing you to a little more history that's probably not terribly exciting, the reason we're here is.
It goes back to the 52?
It goes back to 1984. In 1984, this.
Warren has you beat.
He does. He does. In 1984, this property was permitted as a car wash. And one of the findings that the zoning board entered when it was permitting the car wash was that any subsequent change in use shall require the issuance of a separate special permit. So we've been before the board a few times over the last fifteen years. I think I've been here twice myself. And the reality of this is that now he, Barry DeRusso, the tenant, is seeking to sell and service small motors and lawn mowers, blowers, things like that, all of which can be stored inside. But in order to do that, and to do that legally, he does need to come and get a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. I think the business has been very successful on the site, and in fact, one of the previous iterations, there was extensive renovation to the, to the site itself, which included some extensive changes relative to site plan review. So I'm here to answer any questions, but that's all this is about. It's to facilitate the retail operation in the premises where there have been retail operations going on in excess of thirty-five years already.
So you're going to run, if I'm understanding it correctly, you're going to operate the car wash in the front half of the building, if you will, facing Green Street in the rear half, or a section of the rear will be then designated for retail sales and/or display associated with landscaping contractors' supplies such as small engines?
Yes. Yeah, lawn mowers, that sort of thing. Nothing, nothing huge, not travel.
Lawn mowers, snow blows.
The next to the last page, I think, shows 550 square feet approximately for the small engine sales area, and then another 450 for the small engine service. I think it's the next to the last sheet in the packet, so.
Okay, questions from the, from the members?
Is the detailing, detailing still going on?
Detailing is part of the business that's not terribly active right now, and he's going to be able to use some of the space that had been going for detailing. So he's going to try to offer as much of the services as he's offering currently, but he's just looking to augment the income and frankly utilize the space a little better.
Okay.
My recollection is there's vacuums out at the back of the site. I don't see them on here, so I see parking spaces that, my recollection is, they don't exist. So I guess I have a question on the site plan because I believe there's vacuums out there.
I don't know. To be very candid, I don't know.
I'm almost positive because I remember at one point in time, people complaining about the vacuums that lived there. So I'm pretty sure there are vacuums there, so I'm not quite sure. Maybe they're gone. But at one point in time, I know they were, they were back out here, so I guess I questioned. Yeah, that's my recollection, was they were back along that edge.
Yeah, there shouldn't be anything back there.
So I guess I don't have an issue as long as the vacuums get taken out so that all those parking spaces are available, if they are there. And I guess the other thing is just that, you know, I guess I'm somewhat hesitant considering I'm looking at this and saying, who is going to go buy a small engine with absolutely no display area or nothing out front, considering it's behind the building? So I get the feeling we're going to see lawn mowers out on the front of Green Street, somewhere along the way here, and I guess I'm just very hesitant about that. Knowing, knowing the site, you can barely see back here, so I'm not sure who's going to know that there's a small engine. Maybe they're going to put them on the roof. That could be a possibility, but I just get the feeling at the end of the day, we're going to see those landscaped areas with lawn mowers on them.
Again, Mr. DeRusso's certainly willing to abide by any condition that the board's impose. So to the extent that this board feels disposed to add that to its recommendation, I've got no objection to that.
Is there going to be?
I don't really think I need to add it, Ernie. He doesn't have a legal right to do it. I think it's just unfortunately what's going to happen is, is we're giving him a permit, and then someone's just going to go ahead and do it. That's the normal course of events. He doesn't show any, any display area, he doesn't have any, so he has no legal right to do it. I don't even have to say that, but I guess I'm just reinforcing the fact that if I drove by there and saw lawn mowers on Green Street, I'd be exceedingly upset.
Is there going to be a sign there that they're selling lawn mowers? Is there any kind of signage that is needed to do that?
There's a sign there now.
About lawn mowers or just?
No, no, about the car wash.
Just the car wash, I see.
I don't know that he wouldn't advertise.
Right.
Ask Verna dealer or whatever. But again, the sign's pre-existing.
Okay.
You'd have to comply with the sign requirements anyway, so.
Any other questions from the members? Pleasure of the board.
Recommend we give a favorable recommendation.
I'll second that, provided that we stipulate that the parking spaces as shown are all available.
Exactly. And the.
I, what do we got? We have, does he have to come back here for this or no? This is just for special? That all the special, that all the parking spaces are in fact available and that no, no vacuums are impeding any of those spaces?
Motion by Babe, seconded by, seconded by Joe with the caveat that all available parking spots, as shown on the plan, are vacated from any, any vacuum type of use.
He wanted impediments, and that's okay with.
Impediment's okay. We'll go with impediments. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you, folks.
Let me see.
I think so.
Oh, yeah. Which lawyer didn't get involved yet?
Can I just make one?
Which lawyer didn't get involved yet?
20 Beaver Street.
He's not on the list.
No, no.
Stay there, John, go anywhere. You may be here.
20 Beaver, no? Okay.
It was just to, it was just to.
That's all right.
Sign the as of land anyways.
We'll skip back. Number nine is a supplemental finding, West Fountain Street, Laurelwood at Milford.
Skip number eight.
Oh.
91 Medway.
I'll keep stepping back. She kept it right over your jaw.
My apologies. Going back and forth between 54 and 84 in my head.
Pat, who knew there was going to be a 91 and a 191?
I know, huh? Warren walks in and I drop even further on the list.
ZBA special permit referral, 91 Medway Street.
We'll be seeing more of you.
I am the least senior of the four attorneys. I'm sorry, thank you.
The applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for the addition of auto sales on the subject premises. The proposal is to occupy approximately 1,000 square feet of area to the rear of the retail unit directly north of the Panera Bread Restaurant within the Westerly Building on the property. Specifically, the proposed sales operation is to be for the internet sales of vehicles with public contact by appointment only. The internal space, or interior space, rather, will be for office and showroom only, with indoor display area for no more than four vehicles at any one time. There will be no vehicle service or repairs on the premises at any time. The cumulative off-street parking requirement can be met, and all other zoning requirements appear to be satisfied. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA, subject to there being no outdoor storage or display of vehicles at any time associated with the auto sales operation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. My name's John Fernandez. For the record, my law office is at 12 Main Street in Milford. I'm here with Mr. Mark Epstein, who is behind me. He is the principal in the corporation making application here. This is the Cole Plaza down on Medway Road. At the backside of the most Westerly Building, as was pointed out to me today, east versus west, I'm going to get that right once in my life, at the far Westerly, closest to where we are, as opposed to 495. At the back of that building, you see the little red square. That's the approximately 1,000-square-foot location within the plaza where Mr. Epstein would operate the used car sales business, primarily internet car sales in Massachusetts. You must have a location. You must transact your business at that location. And so he would primarily be doing sales over the internet or by appointment only, and any sales would be transacted at this location. There's no repair that would go on at this location at all, no washing of cars that would go on at this location. It would simply be office and a few cars at any point in time inside, in display, and/or for transaction. The four spaces out front is plenty for the operation. Mr. Epstein has been in or around the business for over thirty years and has had used car licenses in the past to operate, both in this fashion and in fixed-location display, without any incident at any point in time in his career, and so is looking for a favorable recommendation.
Pleasure of the board.
It's like you said, I don't mind this, the only thing I'm wondering about is that we're looking at this with a site that actually doesn't exist because none of this work's been done. Sorry, I'm not sure I understand. This is, this is the proposed site plan for what work that Coles was going to do?
Yes.
But none of this has actually been done, so this isn't what it looks like, nor is the parking what's actually shown on here. It's something different today. If this gets approved at the zoning board, I haven't seen any work done down at Coles as of yet, so effectively, he could be selling this based on, I don't know that that's what the parking is down there today or not. I believe everything is still adequate, but unfortunately, we'd be giving a permit to something based on something that doesn't actually exist in the field.
Well, I guess, to that point, we could assure that the parking spaces that are shown on that to service this particular use would be put in place, and that could be a condition of the permit, certainly. I know that certainly Mr. Nierenberg intends to move forward with his plans for the site. And to that end, and I appreciate your perception on that, we can assure that those spaces will be in place that are out there, so that there is assigned parking for this particular location as a condition of this. And I didn't mention, by the way, but I will, and it wasn't in Larry's report, but there's no intention to have any signage for this out there.
No signage at all?
I wouldn't.
He doesn't.
Purely internet.
Yeah, he doesn't. He's not going to have any.
The parking totals are based on parking reduction. It's based on a parking reduction that this board granted by special permit based on this plan. So to your point, it's, I don't have the prior calks.
I think there's more parking out there now.
More parking than exists on that one.
There's a lot of parking in this system.
Any other further questions from the board?
I'll move to give a favorable recommendation to zoning.
Motion babe by John, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night, John.
Thank you. Good night.
Is Joe just visiting? Are you just visiting or?
I know.
It's your tie. It's got to be your tie.
I made sure my shoes were polished. Obviously, I was told they were not. I learned my lesson.
I was right, Joe. They were not. And I said to you, your wife would be embarrassed if she saw you leaving the house like that. And your mother. All right.
Enough.
Supplemental finding, West Fountain Street, Laurelwood at Milford PRD. On behalf of our client, the Laurelwood at Milford Homeowners Association, Virginia Starkis, President of the Trustees, will formally request the Milford Planning Board review minor changes to the private way known as Dewey Circle. This is an attempt to reduce the total impervious footprint of the planned residential development. Said changes are shown on plan labeled impervious pavement reduction plan. Met it site plan of land in Milford, Mass., scale 30 feet to an inch dated April 20th, 2016, by Garry A. and Hanlon, 333 West Street, Milford, Mass. The proposed revisions are to accommodate a reduction of impervious pavement while repaving paving, excuse me, repaving Dewey Circle by providing a landscaped center island within the cul-de-sac and to eliminate 255-foot of sidewalk located among the southerly side of Dewey Circle. These changes will result in a total impervious area reduction of 2965 square feet, hereby increasing the open space area of the PRD proportionately. No change to the right-of-way pavement width and stormwater design of Dewey Circle is proposed. This reduction for impervious pavement is more in line with today's best management practices for minimizing impervious surfaces and reducing stormwater runoff. We feel that the request changes are in diminuteness, that these adjustments do not constitute a change in the planned residential development special permit originally granted to the WGB Development Corp. Said special permit decision was filed with the Milford Clerk on May 12th, 1986, and subsequently recorded at the Worcester Registry, Excuse me, Worcester District Registry of Deeds on March 20th, 1987, Book 1302, Page 72, and fall within the scope of Article Four of the zoning bylaw, and therefore do not require amendment to the special permit. Excuse me, that was Article Six. Sorry. Supplemental finding to the planning board of the Town of Milford, Massachusetts, here in the board, related to the special permit originally granted to the WGB Development Corp. of 61 Cape Road, Mendon, Mass., to construct a forty, excuse me, 74-unit planned residential development on a site of 29.64 acres off West Fountain Street, as shown on the assesses' map, 35 Block 85, Lot 21A.
That was a suggested, that was a suggested finding I emailed to the members.
Put it at the end, not in the middle.
Good evening. John Nanart with Gary and Howland, representing Laurelwood. We're here tonight, this has all been facilitated by, Laurelwood is going to be repaving Dewey Circle. The pavement's been down thirty years. It's starting to break up in the gutter, and they want to re. The pavement's been down thirty years. Uh, starting to break up in the gutter, and they wanna repave, um, Dewey Circle. And during the process of thinking about how to do Dewey Circle, they've decided they'd like to start reducing their impervious area. Impervious, impervious area for the entire site. They've come up with, they'd like to remove the sidewalk along the southern portion of Dewey Circle and add a landscape isle, island. I did a truck-turning radius plan to show that the island works with fire truck. Um, we're adding a, uh, a raised, uh, landscape island. I'm carrying a two percent slope across the cul-de-sac all the way around. We're carrying the standard point four-two crown down the road. Um, we are removing the sidewalk to here, which is just after a catch basing header, and then adding a handicap accessible ramp. That means all codes. Part of this process, too, they're gonna be cleaning the catch basins at the end of Dewey Circle and the outfall. This is a detention basin, original detention basin down here, so we have filed with conservation, uh, with the Town of Milford and the state. Um, as part of this process, uh, there's wetlands here, wetlands here. You can see the hundred-foot buffer. Um, I have, uh, put silt fence, uh, mulch sock along the end of the cul-de-sac and around up to this building, and then, uh, silt fence along the outfall, because there is some standing water in there, and the mulch sock will not work.
Something you said, John. Something you said.
You didn't, you didn't know you were that good.
John, John. All right.
So this is, you know, basically, it's, uh, they're gonna grind and repave and do some regrading of Dewey Circle. There is a puddle down right here we took, that, uh, sits there now. We took care of that with the new grading.
John, can I just ask you one quick question before you open up the board? Are you eliminating one sidewalk, being that that's the only sidewalk that's on that?
It is the only sidewalk on Dewey Circle.
What's the advantage to that?
Just to reduce the impervious pavement.
Okay. Questions of the board, from the board?
That was my biggest issue. I was gonna, my question, biggest issue. I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable eliminating. If it was both sidewalks, I had no problem just going down to one.
We always have at least one.
And that's why I just wanted clarity on that.
Well, it is a private way in a planned residential development.
No, but people are still entitled to, to walk safely.
Well, this is, this was, this wasn't something that we wanted. This is the trustees of the, of the Laurelwood that wanted removed.
Yeah, I know, no. That may be, but it's our responsibility to make sure it's safe.
I had to explain that to the applicants, so.
Uh, the other, I guess the only other comment is, um, the, the handicap ramp that you're putting in, is there a handicap accessible on the other side?
Yeah, so this comes around near the mailbox, and it's basically flat right out to the pavement in here. There's no curbing. So this is parking for the mailbox. This ends right here, and it's just, it's just flat all to the pavement.
On the south side, there is no, uh, handicap ramp there now, so this will...
I don't.
I have, I have no issue with, with the, with the turnaround in the, in that area, but I, I, I'm not... I, I, I think we should have a sidewalk, regardless of whether it's a plant community or not. I, I believe people should be able to walk safely and not out in the road, regardless of whether it's a plant community or not.
I agree.
Any other comments from the board?
No, I could, I agree with Joe that the sidewalk would be an important part of people walking down the road, go to get their mail, in the middle of the night, walking from one door to another. I think it's essential.
It's a tough situation where you're trying to reduce the impervious.
I understand that.
And there's, where do you take it from? The street's only twenty-six feet wide.
All the last ones we did for Lane With's, we got twenty-six here, is, is twenty, I mean, two.
Subdivisions, we reduced them, but, uh, what I was gonna mention was that what I'd explained to the applicants, uh, early on was that there are two issues really, and, and we're talking about one of them, is whether the board thinks it's a good idea to remove the sidewalk or not. But that's really not the primary, uh, decision. The primary decision is, whatever the change is, is that sufficient enough to trigger reopening, uh, the public hearing and reopening the special permit to amend the special permit? So, uh, those two separate decisions.
Well, I think if the change is nothing more than the planting in, in, in the roundabout, I, I don't think that that's substantial enough. I think if the question is that we wanna eliminate both the sidewalk and do the planting, well, that might be a different discussion.
Yeah, 'cause the planting.
And I say that because if I'm reading the board correctly, it seems that there could be a philosophical difference about getting rid of a sidewalk. There's also an argument back in eighty-six that there was probably, if we go by the subdivision control, that they probably asked for a waiver from the sidewalks on both sides, and they were probably granted one.
Well, they didn't do, they didn't do a subdivision. This was a planned.
A planned residential.
It was, it was allowed because of that, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, so I, I, I just don't know if there's a real benefit to eliminating them in all.
But on the positive side, the, the donut in the cul-de-sac is what we've adopted in, in the subdivision regulations for any new public cul-de-sack. So, uh, at least that seemed to me to, to be something that
Yeah, I would agree.
the board would support, but I had, uh, you know, made the applicants aware that it, uh, it, it wasn't a foregone conclusion that everybody was gonna agree to, uh, eliminate the sidewalk. So, though, again, those are the, the two separate decisions. The thing itself and whether whatever the proposal is needs to reopen the special permit and amend it. So, um...
I'm, I guess going from, my feeling is that putting the circle in would not require it to be reopened. And I, my would be for leaving the sidewalk in. I guess the only thing that I'm, that I'm asking in terms of that, in terms of impervious, is what we've used for, for width, although I don't know that they wanna go in and change curbing and stuff to go to a twenty-four-foot-wide road as opposed to a twenty-six. There is no parking allowed anywhere.
Sure.
Anyway, so.
Yeah, that's why we eliminated the two sidewalks in the city.
That's right.
To have one side.
Still had one sidewalk.
I can't justify giving.
I realize there's no, that just doesn't make any sense. I realize there's no kids in there, but still.
It makes no difference.
I wish I had sidewalks in my area.
Narrowing the road but keeping the sidewalk.
I, I'm trying to, to, if, you know, trying to eliminate pavement if it's possible.
Yeah, with the, so I just talked to them. There, if they could reduce the pavement in the road to twenty-four, then they have no problem leaving the sidewalk.
Okay. I'd be, I'd be more...
I think you're at the same net aggregate of reduction.
Probably more.
Probably more.
So, twenty-four foot?
Yeah, pavement instead of twenty-six. So this, I'll change the detail on the, I can just change it. I can just cross it out on the my line and make it twenty-four.
The sidewalk on the south side.
Right.
I'd be more amenable to that, I think. Uh, the only thing...
The only thing they have to worry about is that occasional moving truck in the, in the trash truck.
Yeah, the only, well, the only other thing that I guess I, I'm somewhat, not that I'm hesitant on, but I, I think being feared at everybody is I'm not sure whether we should, we should ask for comment from the fire chief on doing that.
On, on doing which? Narrowing the?
Narrowing to twenty-four-foot-wide roadway.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't narrow it in the, in the turnaround.
Turnaround, no turnaround, say just in the roadway, just in the roadway, just, yeah. The turnaround should stay as is, because that's what John had in order to make his turning movements and stuff, so I would keep that for the, for the turnaround, just in the roadway, but I, I, I think we should ask the fire chief as, as a matter of, of course, just to make sure he's comfortable with that. But I don't have an issue with doing that.
Okay, so subject to all of those things, uh, the one decision you need to make is whether it's substantial enough or not?
At that point, I would say it's not substantial enough. That's my feeling, is that, is.
I don't think a repave and, and the change, the end change of the cul-de-sac is supportive of reopening.
You gotta repave it anyways, so.
Consensus of the, consensus of the board?
Consensus of the board that this does not require, yes.
Right. Okay, so that's the big, the big issue. The second issue is, uh, the motion would be to, uh, redraft the supplemental finding to
Allow for twenty-four?
To, to reduce the pavement to twenty-four feet wide, keep the sidewalk, uh, verify with the fire chief that, uh, the narrower road and the configuration of, of the cul-de-sac as currently drawn is sufficient. If we can find all that, then, uh, if you, if that motion passes, um, then I'll have this rewritten, and Pat can sign it whenever we get the confirmation.
Okay.
Same thing on my end. I'll have the plan redrafted, showing the twenty-four feet of pavement, put the sidewalk back in, and then Pat can sign it.
I think if you check with the fire chief, what he's gonna say is you're gonna have parking only on one side.
I think, uh, he'll, he'll not park the whole side. I mean, he doesn't allow, it's no parking anyways, I believe, already. No parking on either side. Yeah, so I don't think that's an issue. That's why I was thinking twenty-four would be okay. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's no parking anyways.
I also think they have no parking, because they didn't want from the football games and so on and so forth, so I think that's another reason why there's no parking.
Yeah, it's up a little ways past Godfrey, so they don't get in too far, but, but I don't believe any, I don't think any of the, the PUDs we allow parking on the main roads on any of them, so I'm pretty sure they're supposed to be all signed. Whether there's signs there or not, I don't know, but I don't believe parking's allowed.
Okay. All right, so the pleasure of the board, the, I need a motion?
Motion that we, um...
Do what Larry said.
No, we...
Allow for a reduction of it.
Yeah, that, that the changes as shown are de minimis in that, that we don't require a, uh, change to the, uh, planned unit development special permit, and that we allow for a change to the roadway to twenty-four feet wide with, um, with a sidewalk on the south side, and the, uh, cul-de-sac, uh, shown as, as drawn on the plan that was submitted, and that we, uh, get the approval of the fire chief before allowing for final approval.
Motion by Joe, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
It's a four-foot side.
Just hold your thought for one second, Joe. Let's go circling back. Actually, no. I'm gonna recuse myself on number ten. Let Joe take over, and then I will come back to number three.
Number three here?
No, but I, I believe it's, I believe it's just, uh, a planned submittal, so you just have to sign.
You just need to initial a plan.
That's what I said. We're good to go.
Are they shining it?
I gave it to Joe.
No, my attention, Karen.
I did.
As-built plans submitted for thirteen Commercial Way, Milford, Mass. Attorney Antonellis?
Good evening. Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is our engineer from Gary and Howland.
Mike Assett.
Mike. I've never worked with Mike, so my first night with him.
Your last name?
Assett, H-A-S-S-E-T-T.
The, uh, request tonight is for the acceptance of an as-built plan. I will note to the board that, uh, you'll recall the site plan was amended to add, uh, additional parking spaces. After that amendment, some of those additional spaces, which were above the requirement of a zoning bylaw, in fact, were not built due to some site constraints. I checked with the planner as to whether or not we fought, needed to file a new site plan amended, amendment, and he advised that because the number of parking spaces exceeded the zoning criteria, provided that they were shown properly on the as-built plan, that we could move forward without the need to do an amended site plan. To the extent that the board believes we need an amended site plan, then I would respectfully request that you waive that. We believe that the, uh, as-built plan as shown, uh, conforms to all the zoning, uh, criteria. It's been carefully reviewed. Um, the, uh, aspect that's critical for my client is, is that they are presently, uh, subject to a temporary occupancy permit. They have a Department of Public Health inspection that, uh, will require them to have a permanent occupancy permit in order to move forward with the, um, beginning of planting the, uh, crop that will eventually be used for medical marijuana. So prior to that happening, we need the as-built sign, and respectfully request that you do that.
That crop is different from the landscaping on the site plan.
That's correct. Nothing on the outside, it's inside.
Remembers the inside.
I, I can tell you as a board that if you want to see an, an engineering marvel and a very sophisticated, uh, situation, the building has been outfitted with, uh, very, very expensive technology, and it was fascinating to watch it be put together.
I would love to see, I would love to see it.
This is, this is really trying to get the, the paperwork to catch up with, uh, with reality, because what was approved and what got built are substantially the same. In fact, it's less, as Joe just described, so it didn't seem to warrant going through the whole review again. They're actually paving less, uh, so less impervious surface is better.
The, uh, just for the board, we originally approved ninety-two spaces. There are actually seventy-seven on the site, so that's the change.
Yeah, and, and they had proposed the change in the first place because they wanted more parking. They were, they had more than enough to begin with, uh, without, uh, without the change, but they needed, uh, they felt they needed the extra space.
Pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the plan.
I'll second that.
They accept the as-built.
Sign the as-built.
Yeah. Whatever the terminology.
Motion by John to sign the
Oh, sign the plan.
as-built plan.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lena. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous at four.
Thank you. Tactical question, um, will that then be sent over to the building department? Is that what happens?
Well, yeah, they'll burn some prints. Take that burned, uh...
Put it this way.
Print and bring it in tomorrow.
Okay. All right, you think of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless, if they need more, then see how many they need, but I need four.
Okay.
Nice to see you, Joe.
Nice to see you. Good, good to see you.
Take care.
I have the original one.
Let's help them clean up and get out of here fast.
Okay, number three was, uh, to, um... Endorse the as-built plan. This is, uh, for Twenty Beaver Street. The, uh, prior approvals from both this board and the ZBA. The, the original approvals, uh, referred to a site plan that had been reused several times, so it wasn't clear what the proposal was or whether the required, uh, striping had been done. This is an as-built plan that confirms that they actually did do what was required. They were all just too cheap to get the site plan updated, so now we have an as-built plan that you can, uh, endorse, and that'll, again, get the paperwork to catch up with reality. So I'd ask that Chairman endorse the plan.
Take a motion that we, uh, endorse the as-built plan for Twenty Beaver Street.
Motion made, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. Opposed? Excuse me, uh, uh...
Favor.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We know what you meant.
I have one more piece of information before the adjournment. Heard back from Rick Vilani, um, in regards to our request. What the selectmen have decided to do is they appointed to a search committee Rick Vilani, Scott Chrisifouli, Bob Buckley, and myself, that, uh, they will start interview, oh, excuse me, the applications will start coming in, and I believe interviews will start occurring beginning of, uh, end of May, beginning of June. With that said, obviously, uh, what I would certainly appreciate from the board is any questions or characteristics that you're looking for, please forward them to Larry, and that I will certainly make sure that they're part of the process.
Okay.
Take a motion for adjournment?
I move, adjourn.
Move by Lena, seconded by John. Have a good night.
Babe?